I'm going to call the Board of Education for Wednesday, June 29th, 2016, to order at 6:02 PM. Mr. Aho, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terwold, your then?
Correct. All right, if you can all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Alleges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any agenda changes, so we'll skip right to the President's Report. So again, good evening and welcome. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for June 29th, 2016. I'm Rob Felber, I'm honored to be your President. I hope all our staff, parents, and students are enjoying the summer break. I want to send out a huge thank you to the district in support of the 16th Annual Relay for Life that was recently held June 24th and 25th at Tiger Stadium. As a past Chair and now parent of Chairs, the support was truly amazing. A special note is that this event was chaired for the first time ever by youth, four sophomores that are now juniors at Twinsburg High School. Participation teams and the money raised for the American Cancer Society were all higher than last year, and we expect that total to continue to grow through the August 31st deadline. And while Cleveland celebrates the Cavs and prepares for the Republican Convention, back in Twinsburg, we're busy preparing for our newest Tigers to join the streak, and I had to Google that, that's what a group of Tigers are called. We're also preparing for the class of 2017 to leave the Den. And there are thousands of Tigers in between that will be in our buildings in just about seven weeks. As you can see, the business of the schools does not stop as we continue. We know that the Board and Administration do not take the summer off. We continue to focus on our fiduciary responsibility, especially the permanent elimination of the tangible personal property tax. The permanent elimination of TPP will account for over $6 million in lost revenue to our district. Tonight, we have two very important presentations. These reports are two of the, they're on two of their district goals, goals that the district set almost a year ago. First, we'll hear from our Superintendent and Treasurer on an in-depth financial flow chart report. Note that the Finance Committee has already been working on this chart with our Administration, and the entire Board will be discussing this at a work session scheduled for next month. Second, we will hear from the Superintendent, Business Manager, and our guest architects from Lesko Architectures on the result of a goal-driven, year-long facilities assessment. These two topics, the financial health of our district and our facilities, are completely interdependent. This is just the beginning of what will be some difficult decisions for our community. And many of you, because I know you're not here, may be seeing this in the comfort of your home, and we strongly encourage you to share the video feed from Cable 9. This can be found on our district website under the Board tab and then the sub-tab Broadcast link. And of course, all of our broadcast school board meetings are there, and I expect the link, as always, to be up within a couple of days. So with that, we're going to move on now to the business of our district. And without further delay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber, Board of Education. Good evening, everyone who's in our audience and our families at home. It is a busy time of the year. I often, just with Mr. Welker here, that we're really happy when the kids come back because things slow down a little bit maybe, but it is an extremely busy time with hiring happening and a lot of capital improvement projects going on as well. And this evening's presentations are important because it's a culmination of work that has occurred for two district goals over the entire 15, 16 school year, so we're pleased to present that information to you this evening. Before we get to that, though, just a reminder that our summer edition of Twinsburg Schools Today will hit the airwaves on July 1st. This is the special edition we do every summer that is hosted by Logan Pavouski, now a graduate of Twinsburg High School. And the thing about the program that I really enjoy is it's snippets of great things that have happened the entire school year. So it features many of our students and staff members, it highlights our retirees, and it's just a great glimpse back as we get ready to move forward. So we invite you to take a look at it beginning July 1st on Cable 9. Also, Board of Education, just so you know, that this past Monday, students at Samuel Bissell began the Roar into Reading Summer Intervention Program. These are students who have some reading literacy deficiencies, and they'll be working with some of our outstanding staff members to build some skills over the next several weeks. And just so you know, that that intervention program is paid for and supported with Title I dollars. So we appreciate having that revenue stream to do that, and we appreciate our staff who are supporting our kids this summer in this intervention program. Also, over at RBC, our parking project, the paving project, is well underway. If you take a drive past Tiger Stadium, you'll see barrels, and you'll see some of the work that's been going on there. And of course, the tennis court renovation project is now in Week 3, and a lot of things have happened there, including the construction crew stumbling on a family of three skunks as they were moving some things up there. So it's been interesting and exciting the last couple of weeks, but progress is being made, and we look forward to our students and our community members able to enjoy the tennis courts once they're finished later this summer. And of course, that central office, I think I already mentioned, we're doing a lot of interviewing and hiring and making some great recommendations to you this evening for staff members that I think will be an asset to the school district once they begin working here. Board of Education, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate our Twinsburg High School varsity head baseball coach, Don Jones. Last week, I had a great opportunity to attend his induction ceremony. He was inducted into the Northeast Ohio Baseball Coaches Association's Hall of Fame, and it was held over at the April Arrows Ballpark down in the Akron area. And it was just a beautiful day, his family and friends were there, and it's just a great way to congratulate Don for all the work he does with our Tigers as well as other interests he has in the world of baseball. So congratulations to him, and that's really congratulations to us that he is employed here and is one of our coaches. Also, congratulations to members of our high school and middle school staff who collaborated to submit some grant applications to the Summit County ADM. This evening on the Board agenda, you will notice that I'm recommending the approval of two agreements to accept $2,500 each for Twinsburg High School and RBC. And those dollars will be used toward the purpose of drug and alcohol abuse awareness and educational programming. Board of Education, you know we are very concerned about making sure that our students make good decisions, and these dollars will go toward developing some programming into the new school year that will support our kids in those endeavors. So we look forward to presenting that plan as soon as it is developed. And actually, we're working with our Beechbrook social workers this summer to create that plan, and we should have something ready for you as we get underway in August. And then finally, as Mr. Felber indicated, we do have these two very important administrative reports this evening, and both have a take a look back in time, but also pushing to the future what our community, school community, has the potential to be in supporting student learning as we move into the future. So we look forward to talking with you this evening on both reports and providing opportunities for you to ask questions and provide your input. And of course, as Mr. Felber indicated, there will be a work session of the Board of Education in July for a further conversation, because certainly plans of these magnitudes cannot be developed just in a short meeting in one evening. So there will be a lot of conversation, not only with the Board of Education, but with members of our community as we garner interest and feedback moving forward into time. So thank you for the opportunity this evening to introduce this to our community. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committees?
No.
The report, Finance did meet, but we're going to hear enough Finance today, so you'll hear the results and continuation of that meeting.
Same with Billings and Brown's.
Yeah.
We met last week and reviewed the presentation, we're going to be seeing tonight, so.
All right, so you're giving the President.
Oh, no.
I'm kidding. All right, well, I'm going to toss the ball back to you and let you go right into administrative reports.
Well, thank you. This evening, as I indicated, we have two administrative reports. The first we're going to start to discuss with you, Board of Education, is our Financial Strategic Planning Flow Chart. Every year, as you know, Board, you establish district goals. This year, there were four goals, and the first was our financial goal. And specifically, the financial goal stated that the Twinsburg City School District will maintain fiscal integrity and accountability of the district's financial resources as evidenced by the creation of a strategic planning flow chart with financial milestones denoted. And it is now projected here on our screen. And this evening, Marty and I will present and explain the various parts of this planning flow chart. But before we can look to the future and determine where we want to go, we need to take a look at the past. And Board of Education, we mentioned this many times, and that is in 2012, the Board of Education at that point determined that an operational change plan should be created and then implemented. And we continue to hold close to that plan, and the plan has actually been very beneficial to us because it has allowed us to chart where we wanted to go educationally with our staff members, with our programming, and so we continue to hold true to the tenants of that plan. As part of the plan, in 2012, the community supported a 4.9 mil operating levy that generates for the district $3.8 million every year. And then the second, actually, was the third part of the plan, was a 6.9 mil renewal levy that was passed in 2013, and that generates $6.9 million annually. And when we worked through the operational change plan through the two different committees and then meeting with our community and our focus groups, one of the things that we were committed to at that point, and one of the things that the Board of Education was very committed to, was that we were going to honor the commitment and our promise that we wouldn't be back talking about any kind of money issue until the year 2017. Because, you know, we recognize that asking individuals, residents of our community, to support ballot issues is a financial decision that they have to make. And so we knew that when we passed these levies in '12 and '13, that folks were really taking out of their pocket dollars that, you know, they could be using elsewhere. And they do so because they support the students and the educational process here in our school district. So with that in mind, we have been very frugal in our spending. We have stayed true to the operational change plan, and that was an important part of this planning flow chart as we move forward in its creation. In developing the operational change plan and then with the financial planning flow chart thereafter, we had a couple of assumptions, and this particular flow chart is based on these four assumptions. First of all, as you will note, and Marty will expound on in a few minutes, there are a cycle of renewal levies that will need to be passed. So in order for us to continue to have financial health here in the school district, it will be imperative that we pass those renewal levies. Second of all, the thing that we know, and we talk about it, and Mr. Felber, you mention it practically at every meeting, is the fact that we recognize that tangible personal property tax revenue streams are soon going to be totally eliminated. And Marty noted that in 2023, that won't even be a conversation anymore because if all things hold us true, that revenue stream will be eliminated in total. The other thing is that when we built this, we were on the assumption that we wouldn't be adding new staff. So keeping our staffing levels as level as they are currently was the work that we put into the creation of this flow chart. And even with all those things, even if we were to pass three renewals here in the next several years, it's unfortunate that because of what's happening with TPP, the district looks to be out of money in our reserves in the year 2020. So those are pretty important assumptions to make, and those were things that we were counting on in our thoughts as we created this full chart. Going to ask Marty now to talk in part about the middle part of this chart, the revenue streams, the levy cycles, and also a little bit about TPP.
Thank you. The middle part there starts with one of the black circles. And on that black circle, it kind of talks about state funding. When the state does their calculations, they come up with a number for every district. Ours should be like $9 million, but because of caps over time, and they keep changing this funding formula, we only receive about $4.5 million. So there's dollars there that the state says they should be giving us, but just because of the way funding occurs, we don't get that, those dollars. So it's just they keep, they've changed the state funding model like four or five times in recent history. They just keep, every like two years, they keep changing it. Actually, the last biennial budget, they didn't change it, because it's unusual, but before that, it's been changed, especially like every time a new governor comes in, they decide to change it. And when they change it, they put caps on it, so then there's no growth in there for our district. This year, actually, the expenditures will exceed revenues, so we're going to have a red number there at the bottom of our five-year forecast for this year. It'll become actual, and there'll be about a million-dollar shortfall. So this is the time really to start planning, looking at our levy cycle and what's going on. So that's why this conversation is going on, this is the time you need to start looking at it when those lines cross. Typically, you know, this is all in old school finance literature. School districts pass levies, but because of effects like House Bill 920, the revenues stay flat. There's no inflation increase. It's not like a city where their income tax can increase with inflation, you know, once the tax is passed on a property owner, it does not go up. So that's what happens with schools, is then that you basically have flat-funded revenues, and, you know, the expenditures keep increasing due to inflation and things like that, you know, the price of gasoline, and that has been relatively flat. But, you know, utilities and other services, legal services and nursing services and then other services that we use tend to increase over time. And we do our best to watch those. And later on down that chart, that triangle there, that's the point where, you know, if we don't do anything between now and the next several years, and we do, you know, start approaching a negative overall fund balance in 2020, the state of Ohio will first write us a letter and say, you know, what are your plans? What are you going to do here? They could put us in physical watch or physical caution depending on the deficit. And then eventually, if nothing occurs, and that deficit stays there, they'll actually put us in physical emergency. And that's when the state kind of comes over, comes out to the district, and they basically take over the running of the school district. So we don't want to get there. So we need to, you know, that's why these conversations are being had now. We have plenty of time to, you know, to effect change. So the next line down is basically looking at the revenues, the property taxes that we receive. We receive about $27 million in property taxes, and that accounts for about 63% of our revenues. And out of that $27 million, you can see, just looking across that line of little squares there, those three renewals, renewal levies account for $13.6 million, which is just about half of, you know, what those, you know, what the total in real estate levies that we receive. So it's crucial that we pass those renewal levies. They're a big part of what we need to operate. The one levy is a general operating levy, the first one, and then the next two are emergency levies. Emergency levies have a 10-year cycle on those. So when those come up, we can renew those for 10 years. The operating levy is a little bit different, it's got a five-year cycle, or it can also be renewed for a continuing period of time, something to consider. The emergency levies is one of the things that districts have done before with the emergency levies. We were trying to work with state funding to get the best we could, but they changed the rules on that, so unfortunately, we have emergency levies, two emergency levies now that we need to renew, you know, on that 10-year cycle. And then the last row there, the reddish kind of row, that looks at the tangible personal property taxes. There's $4.6 million, which is about 10% of our revenues right now, in tangible personal property taxes that are being phased out over time. Under the current biennial budget, they eliminated $800,000 each year, but then they came up with some mechanism to backfill that. So we're getting reimbursed on their lost reimbursement that, I don't know, makes my head spin trying to keep up with how they give you money and then take it back away and then give it back to you again, and it's just amazing. So anyway, looking forward, then after that, they said that the phase-out then would be 5/8 of a mil, and what a mil generates. And a mil generates for Twinsburg about $800,000, so 5/8 of a mil is $500,000. So over the next several years, you can see it's $500,000 for those six years. And then if that all totals up, that comes with the $4.6 million that's being phased out. So hopefully, I don't know, hopefully, but this is the funding model that they have right now. They have changed the funding model numerous times since this whole thing started many, many years ago, about 2004, about 12 years ago, this whole thing started. And they've changed these phase-outs in the models, and so it's really hard to look forward and project what's going to happen when the state legislature changes their legislation, the laws and stuff, on how this is all phased out. That's what we're looking at, and that's like the biggest challenge we have right now is looking at ways to compensate for the lost tangible personal property. You know, not only are the other revenues fairly flat-funded, you know, state revenue, you know, they cap that, so there's no extra increase in inflation, area increase or anything there. Property taxes are also flattened, just the way House Bill 920 was put into effect. So basically, revenues are fairly flat-funded, and then we come with a tangible piece that, you know, is a reduction. So that's our big challenge, is how to, you know, compensate for that lost revenue.
So in addition to the information shared with Marty, a couple of the other considerations on the flow chart include the fact that we're a people business. You know, it takes a lot of staff members to support the education of our students, and our largest expenditure as an organization happens to be the salaries and benefits part of what Marty manages in his office. I'm pleased to let you know, Board of Education, as you already do know, I suppose, that the negotiations with our Twinsburg Support Staff Association, the TSSA, our classified members of the staff have gone very well. And in fact, we expect the TSSA membership to take a look at the tentative agreement in the near future, at which point we'll be bringing it forward for approval by the Board of Education. But we began negotiations with TSSA back in April. The negotiations went extremely well, and we're happy that we have a tentative agreement with them. But again, that's part of the expenditures that we are committed to here in the school district. It takes a lot of talented individuals focused on educating our kids to do a great job and cost money to do so. So we have concluded negotiations with TSSA, and we will be beginning negotiations with our Twinsburg Education Association in the spring of '18. Recall that we just finished those negotiations last summer, and so we have two more years under that agreement. But that, before you know it, we'll be back at the table with the teachers' union, taking a look at their contracts and going from there. The other thing to consider, and you'll be hearing a lot about this this evening, happens to be our capital projects. Board of Education, last school year, one of the goals was to do a lot of the legwork behind our facilities assessment. And recall that we did the focus groups. About 800 individuals, about 500 adults and 300 students participated and offered some feedback about our grounds and facilities. And this evening, you'll hear the report from our architectural firm, Lesko and Associates, that will bring that conversation to a close and then with more consideration from the Board as to what to do next steps. But when you take a look at our financial planning flow chart, certainly, one of the things that we recognize and that we must pay attention to is if we want to continue to have facilities that are warm, safe, and dry for our kids and facilities that support learning in the 21st century, obviously, some things need to be renovated and refreshed. So you'll be taking a look at that this evening, but that is part of this conversation. I guess, long story short here, as you look up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll notice that expenditures continue to rise, just there's costs of living and such, and the revenue stream, mostly because of the fact that we're taking a big hit with our TPP revenue stream. It comes a time that the Board of Education will have to have some hard conversations amongst themselves first, and then garnering support of the community as to what to do next. We know that we have three levy renewals in the short term, as you see here, '17, '18, '18, '19, and '20, '21, and that's just a matter of business. That's just how our school has, our district has been funded for many, many years. These are renewals, these are not new money issues. But because of the drain on the revenue stream because of TPP, we're going to need to take a look at how the Board would like to proceed moving forward with potentially a new money issue at some point in the future. So not to put words into your mouth, Board of Education, but certainly this flow chart provides you with a visual, if nothing less, that shows you that we're doing our best as a school district to manage expenditures, to make sure that we're being very mindful of the operational change plan, to be frugal in our decisions, but at the same time, there are some things out of our control and that happens to be TPP, and goodness knows the next biennial budget, what will happen next. But things that we have to pay attention to so that we can continue to maintain an excellent educational program and those opportunities for our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. This is obviously a fantastic tool. A lot of the things that you're seeing here have not just appeared tonight. As you mentioned, we've been mentioning TPP, and our predecessors, or at least my predecessors, were mentioning it long before our arrival. So these are interesting times. As far as TPP, if I'm not mistaken, we're one of 75 districts out of the 600 and some 13 that this affects. Have we been to the state? Yes. Have we lobbied? Yes. Have we held financial meetings with them? Yes. This is not something new. This is, you know, something that's been very real and in our face for a long time, and I commend both the Administration and the Finance Committee for putting it in this form. Couple comments slash questions. Marty, I just want to confirm, as I always get to question, there's building going on in town and within the district. Doesn't that mean, you know, for the district? And a lot of people, you know, are not aware of House Bill 920. But correct me if I'm wrong, you know, if there is more building, the taxes are capped, everybody actually pays less.
Yeah, and some of the issues on the emergencies, that's true. On the regular, general operating ones, you'll see a little increase, but, you know, it's really quite minimal.
Right, so we could be getting more students with less money.
Yeah.
If there's building.
Definitely, definitely one house, the taxes on one house does not pay for the title.
Right, exactly. So I just always like to bring that up because a lot of people aren't aware that was passed in 1976, am I mistaken? House Bill 920. You already mentioned, Mrs. Power, that the levies that are planned on our cycle, you always hear no new money or no new taxes. That's true. Any new money would be subject to the 12.5% homestead rollback that we've all enjoyed with these levies. And that's, again, you know, part of the funding. So this is, while it's all on one page, this is going to be a very in-depth with the entire Board in our next work session, and the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee before that, and before that had been dealing with it. So I'm preaching to the choir of everybody here that knows what TPP is, but for those that recall my President's Report, if you're watching this at home, please send the link from our Board, share the story, because, you know, if we're going to have the community that we want and the schools that we want, we need everybody to understand just what we're facing. This isn't, you know, a light left on for 10 hours or something. These are big numbers, and as Mrs. Powers mentioned, we're a people business. Majority of our funding goes towards the staff that we continue to enjoy their efforts. We are one of the lowest cost per pupil of the district, not only compared to our neighbors, but also the state average. That comes up every year in Mr. Aho's five-year forecast, which is just that, a five-year forecast. Most of us don't know what we're doing tomorrow, let alone five years, and, but yet, we're mandated to, you know, maintain that five-year forecast. So I'm going to toss to my colleagues if any questions or comments.
I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments, and I won't belabor the TPP issue because I think that that's been a big thing. I shudder to think where we would be had we not implemented the operational change plan. This would be way worse had we not taken the measures that we did at that time. So I always want to commend the prior Board for having the courage to do some things in the, you know, that are in the best interest of the district long-term. So obviously, with the, you know, the decisions that we'll be making, it's always for purposes of long-term planning. I also want to highlight a couple of things and some fallacies with respect to school funding. You know, I always want to continue to remind the community that the state has continually shirked their responsibility to fully fund public schools. The Supreme Court has ruled numerous times that the way in which public schools are funded are too heavily reliant on property taxes. As you can see, that continues to be the case. They say that there's no money, but they funneled over a billion dollars to charter schools over the last 10 years. And even with respect to charter schools, I don't think that it's something that's going to go away. I do have a real issue with how charter schools are funded. You know, they take, I don't know, Marty, what's the number that we receive?
We have about $900 a kid.
About $900 a kid, so that's like, they take about five times that much away?
About $260,000 a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, I mean, in terms- But nonetheless, I mean, in terms of, from a per-kid basis, it's not dollar-for-dollar that leaves our coffers. So we take triple, quadruple, you know, hit every time, you know, a kid leaves our district to attend a charter school. And I think that just that disparity, and that disparity alone, is something that needs to be fixed. The other piece is, you know, the cap. I know the funding formula changes, you know, depends on who's in office, but currently, as we sit here right now, I mean, we could receive 1,000 more kids, and you would think that that's all that revenue's coming to us, and that that's not the case. Because of the way that we're funded, we would expect to, still be expected to educate those children. There's an expense that comes with that, not only just in educating the child, but also from a facility standpoint. When the legislature decides that they want to implement a new initiative, there's dollars that have to be expended, and we don't get funding for those things. And so that just further exacerbates the problem that we find ourselves in. So I'm going to continue to harp on this and urge our community to be extremely active in reminding our legislators that are in Columbus of the situation that we're in, having to continually come to the community and ask for more money, or more, or money to continue to sustain what we have at the same time where our expenses are increasing and revenues are not level with what our expenditures are. So we're going to continue to be diligent as a board, continue to be fiscally responsible in looking at what we're spending and what we're getting for what we're spending, but much of the problem lies in Columbus, and I think that the community's voice is, I think the people will respond much more favorably to our situation, to the extent that we continue to do. And so I just want to continue to remind the community of the realities that we face moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Anybody else? All right. Next report.
Okay, so that's the first administrative report. Switching gears a little bit, Board of Education, this evening, we have a very important second administrative report to share with you, and it talks about our facility strategic plan, just like our financial strategic flow chart. This was one of the four goals for the school year, and the particular goal states, "The Twinsburg City School District will finalize a facility strategic plan, which will address and balance our district's immediate needs and long-term goals." And just so that you have an understanding of the age of our buildings, I always find this very interesting. Wilcox Primary School was built in 1960. Then Samuel Bissell was built in 1964. George G. Dodge was built in 1969. Our middle school, RBC, RB Chamberlain Middle School, actually was our high school at one time before the high school opened, at Twinsburg High School. That building was built in 1958. Twinsburg High School was open in 1999, the first part of it, and the second part in 2006, I believe. Hudeck House, which is where our Twinsburg Alternative Program is housed, that building actually doesn't belong to the Board of Education, it belongs to the city of Twinsburg, and we lease that through a contract on an annual basis. But that building was built in 1920. And then, of course, we have the bus garage and the Board of Education office on Ravenna Road that round out the board's properties. So I tell you that because that sort of focuses you on our facilities and the age of our And it's rather interesting to see, you know, the age, and when we did our facilities assessment last year with our focus groups, one of the things that I said to every group that I met with was, thank goodness that we had forefathers that were so good about establishing well-built schools that have lasted through time. And so what we find is that our buildings are in relatively good shape. I'm not going to say that our buildings are unsafe, because that's not true. But, you know, they are in good shape considering that the age that they are and the year that they were built. But certainly, with age comes the need to refresh and renovate, and that's what we're going to be talking about this evening. Before we move forward, I just wanted to remind the board that last year's goal talked about this facilities assessment, and Chad and I, and along with Patty Coslow, our peer consultant, facilitated many, many, many focus groups last year with parents and community members and local officials, our senior citizens, and other community leaders, parents. And then we also asked for the input of our students, and we had over 300 students offer some ideas about the facilities, the places where they learn, and their vision for what a school of the 21st century might look like. And those were really interesting conversations with the kids, and reading their feedback was not only delightful, but also made us all pause and think, because, you know, their learners in the 21st century, they're wired differently than we potentially might have been as students, and their learning needs are different than those that we had. And remember, Board of Education, the keys during that work of last year was to focus on making sure that our facilities that we provide for our students are always warm, safe, and dry. Those were the three words that we continued to emphasize. Also, Board of Education, the year prior, on an additional district goal, and so this would have been two years ago, the Board of Education asked me to engage in an enrollment study. And we worked with DeJong Richter out of Dublin, Ohio, and DeJong Richter actually conducted two separate studies. The first was a build-out analysis services study, and the second was an enrollment projection study. And those two studies were actually very important, because at the same time, the city of Twinsburg was working through their comprehensive strategic plan. And one of the things that Larry Finch, who works for the city, and I talked about it on a number of occasions, happened to be the projections that the city had for the enrollment in our school district. And I was a doubting Thomas, because what Mr. Finch was telling me was, through the work that the city had completed, was that our enrollment in our schools was not going to grow, but was going to stabilize and, in fact, actually decrease over the next many years. And I was a doubting Thomas, and so thanks to the Board of Education allowing me to do so, we contracted with DeJong Richter, and they provided two additional studies. The other thing we were concerned about is there seems to be a lot of building going around. Every place you look, there's new development going up somewhere in our community. And so I was concerned with these new houses, would we be getting new students, and what would that look like, how many kids would be in a classroom? And then, of course, the enrollment projection study. The first study, the build-out analysis service study, was completed in November of '14, and our enrollment projection study was completed in January of '15. And the results of those studies, most interesting, actually aligned with the study that was completed by the city of Twinsburg, that even though we have a lot of growing in our community, a lot of new houses going in, what our study concluded, along with and aligned to that of the city, was that enrollment will not increase, and in fact, stabilizes or decreases over the next years until 2024. Because what we found in our studies is that those individuals who have raised families, have kids graduate from Twinsburg High School, and are now empty masters, aren't leaving. So it's not as if your children graduate and you go leave, our school community, they're staying. And in fact, most of our new kids that are enrolling, the brand-new families, not the families that have had other kids in our district, but the newest families are the ones that are moving into the new communities. So it was just interesting, and the reason I'm expounding on that this evening is because when our friends from Lesko Architectsors looked at their numbers, they used our information to help focus their work. So it was important that, two years ago, the Board of Education decided that an enrollment study was important, because now, two years forward, those numbers are important in the information that you're going to hear this evening.
So after the end of last year, we presented our findings of the facilities focus groups, and at that exact board meeting, you also authorized us to go out for an RFQ for architectural services and then energy consulting services. And through that process, we were able to award that RFQ in November of 2015 to Lesko Associates, who is the highest-ranked architectural firm, and then Karpinski Engineering, which was the highest-ranked energy consulting firm. We actually wound up working through with Lesko to subcontract with Karpinski, which also was cost-effective and had one central point of contact for our master planning process. And so Lesko and Karpinski, both were very busy, spent a lot of time here from November up until, well, even today. So just going through our, doing site visits, what they did was they took all of the qualitative data that we received from the facilities focus groups, and took that information, what the community was telling us about, what they thought they needed in the schools, and took that data, along with some of the studies that we had, as far as, like, examples would be our thermographic roof study, some different things that we did with different vendors. We provided that information to them as well, so that they could collect all of that information that we already had, in addition to doing their site visits and talking with all of our key staff members. They talked to head custodians, our maintenance supervisor. We did a lot of behind-the-scenes tours of some of the things that might not have even come up in our qualitative analysis. So for instance, if, my favorite one, the hot water heaters. If you have hot water, you might not realize that the hot water heaters are about to go. And so those types of analyses of HVAC, of our plumbing, of our electrical systems, of all those different things, which are going to be talked about today, those are some of the other pieces that were added into the more qualitative analysis of the master plan. So with that, we have a draft plan that we're very excited about presenting here today. This plan was presented at our finance subcommittee on June 9th, and then our Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee on June 15th. And now, two weeks later, we're here today to present it to the entire Board of Education. It's definitely an exciting time for all of us, just to have the opportunity to present that to, our findings to you. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Rob Blatchford, who's President of Lesko Associates, and then also Ken Dom, who is our, my person who I get to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and we even talk on weekends all the time. So he's my buddy now.
Not a Penns fan, are you?
I haven't converted him into a Pittsburgh Penguins fan yet.
All right. Let's hope.
So without further ado, Rob?
Great, thank you, Mr. Welker. Mrs. Powers, President Felber, and members of the board. First, I wanted to thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to be partnering with you on this very important assessment. What we wanted to do is, you've received a copy of the total assessment. What we're going to do is give a presentation that summarizes a lot of this information. And while we do that, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt us and just ask, we can have a dialogue. I'm going to start by just talking a little bit about our firm, to bring you up to date, and then how this process was done, and then Ken's going to go through each of the buildings and the assessments and give you a summary. Then at the end, we're going to talk about some master plan options that the board may Just a little bit about our firm. All we do is PK through 12 public educational facilities. We've been around about 60 years, and really, we've done just about every kind of school facility you could imagine, from new buildings, renovations, restorations. We've done everything from elementary to high school, even bus garages and other types of facilities. So Ken and I have been doing this for 25, Ken probably 30 years now, but this has really been our focus. We not only are excited about school buildings, but about education as well, and bringing that together. We know a lot about school planning, operations. We do a lot of assessments. We've done about 500 assessments of school buildings across the state. Getting to your assessment, the goals that we started with were to define your immediate and long-term facility needs. And then we were asked to prioritize, help you prioritize your summer projects, which have to do with your PI funds, then evaluate Dodge Intermediate School, not only from a facility standpoint, but also from an educational standpoint in terms of its adequacy, and then help you develop a five-year facilities master plan. And the process that we took was, as Mr. Welker said, in the winter of 2015, we started to conduct physical assessments of all your buildings, and Ken's going to explain a little bit about how we did that. We evaluated the conditions in 23 categories, which Ken will go through, and then we developed costs based on those needs, and then we helped you establish priorities of each of those elements. And we have high priority, middle, and then low priority, which you'll see on your buildings here. And then develop a new and renovation master plan, and develop options, and those are based on the young enrollment projections that Mrs. Powers mentioned. And if you look, what we typically do is we go out five years in terms of the enrollment projections and use that as our guide for the number of students. So you'll see here, five years, 2020, 21. These are the numbers that we used when we developed the master plan options that you'll see a little later on. Ken is going to talk about the builders.
Good evening. Well, like Chad said, we've been working together now for a couple of years, and we've had some successful projects, but we're working well together as a team. And, you know, we started this process six or seven months ago, our team of architects and engineers, and we went around to every building, and sometimes more than one visit to get the full feel of what's going on in these buildings, because not everything is readily apparent. But before I go into each building and talk about some of the highlights related to each building, I just want to kind of set the stage on this overall process. We use a standardized format that has about 23 categories in it, and we helped the, we worked with the state in the original facilities assessment in 1990, and we developed this strategy, and that's been in play now for 25 years. And any architect that's going out and reviewing facilities, if the Ohio's facilities is involved at all, they're going to use this format. So it's categories like the heating, roofing, doors and windows, handicap access, and you can see those, it might be a little bit hard to read in this, but on the left, but all of these tables are reprinted in your book. Another thing I wanted to hit upon is that when you see those numbers on the right-hand side of those columns, those are the costs related to that task. But that's not really the final turnkey cost. We need to, if we're going to look at project costs, we need to add in an allowance for contingency, soft costs or non-construction costs, and those things are things like the design fees, construction manager if they're involved, printing costs, construction testing. There's a whole bucket of items that get included in that. And then, depending on where you are in the state, the regional cost factor adds or deducts from that a little bit. So just, if you go down that line, and you'll see that total of $3.9 million, when you add in those additional factors, it's about $4.8 million. It actually adds an average of about 22%, 27% to these task costs. It actually adds an average of about 22, 27% to these task costs. One thing that we do is we try to prioritize the expenses as we go around and see these things. Some things kind of float to the top as tasks that need to be done sooner rather than later. So we've kind of set this as a high, medium, and low priority. Having said that, I want to caution you that don't feel that because something has been made a lower priority that it's not important. And I might use as an example roofing. The average life of a roof is about 25 years. Most of your roofs are 25 years old. A few of them are leaking and have, are saturated with water. Those we've put in a high priority, but we need to keep on your radar screen that eventually these other roofs are going to need to be replaced. So that's, it's a factor that we use as part of our standardized process. And one other item is according to the Ohio Facilities Team, when the repair costs exceed two-thirds of what the replacement cost of a building is, then it's usually not considered for renovation. We go to the new replacement cost. So moving into, and I'll start with the Wilcox. Under high priorities, we saw doors and windows, a lot of your doors and windows there are original. The cooler freezer needs to be replaced, there's fire alarm issues and sound system issues, and there are a few HVAC control issues. Under medium, we've got toilet rooms and there's ongoing paving and fencing needs there. One of the lower priorities is roofing. Again, your roofs there are 25 years or older and we'll, with each of these, I'll show you a few images. On the upper right there, you see original windows, they're very inefficient and drafty. Upper left, you see a roof, it's not leaking, but it does have standing water, and this is an older roof. We don't like to see standing water on roofs, it sooner or later causes problems. On the lower right, you see the chimney where the bricks are spalling, you see efflorescence and it needs tuck pointing. The lower left, you see a door that's not considered handicap accessible. A person going up to that door in a wheelchair has no place for their feet. So, and it's not just a matter of pulling that door forward because it creates the same problem on the backside. So this would need to be rebuilt. Going, moving on to Bissell, under the high priority, we're looking at fire alarms, sound systems, accessible toilets, HVAC, and site circulation. By that we mean the roadway system, separation of cars and buses. Under medium, again, there we're looking at paving and fencing. And under low priority, roofing, site lighting, and heating. Few images here, on the right, you see a concrete loading dock and sidewalks that are breaking up. Again, you've got a roof with standing water, and this is not a roof that we've put on the high priority. So they're out there lurking and sooner or later they're going to need to be replaced. The lower left, we've got typical classroom with old casework, the sink doesn't work. Just as a matter of noting that upgrades are needed. At Dodge, I'm going to take a little bit more time to talk about Dodge. What I haven't talked about in your other schools are design issues, we're just talking about repairs, because the school's function. At Dodge, we also need to consider that there are some design issues. One of them being is that your classrooms are very small. They're, this is a 30% smaller than the state standard. It's actually, the state standard is 900 square feet for a classroom, they allow a 10% reduction of 810. Your classrooms are actually 30% smaller than the state minimum. So at 570 square feet, your classrooms are very tight and hard to function in. All of your classrooms have glass fronts, which nobody seems to like, they cover them with curtains or artwork. You have an open media center, which is continually facing noise issues. Your lockers, if you look on the lower left there, you can see the lockers in the middle of the corridor, which obstructs the view of the teachers to see what's going on on the other side of those lockers. And then just a general site comment, the proximity to the water treatment plant creates occasional odor issues. When we talk about repair priorities, under the high priority, we've got basically all of your HVAC needs to be replaced. It's just limping along. Doors and windows, everything is original and needs to be replaced. The fire alarm, the sound systems, basically your technology infrastructure needs to be replaced at that building, and sidewalks. Under medium, we've got paving issues and again toilet rooms. Under a low priority, we've got things like your outdoor sports facilities are all worn, auditorium seating, the gymnasium could use a full makeover, and then the locker replacement, which we discussed before. Now, when I talk about all of these, now if you add these up, you know, you're around 10 or 11 million dollars, that doesn't add up to this number down here, this 17.9. The difference is we've, we are trying to address the size of the classroom. These numbers here just deal with repairs, this number we would involve if we were going to try to do something with your classroom size. And conceptually, what we visualize could happen is that you would take your classroom wing, you would take three classrooms, take out the walls that divide those rooms and make it two classrooms, which would put you at right about the ideal classroom size. Now, the result of that is that you lose 10 classrooms. So to replace those classrooms, we need to provide an addition. And that's what that 7.9 million dollars does. So we tried to separate this from repair costs versus trying to correct a major deficiency in the building. A few images, you've got a great roof on Dodge. In the upper left, that's not an optical illusion, those ceiling tiles actually do sag, and that's from humidity and lack of proper ventilation. Lower left, you see the open stairways to the media centers, those are low guard rails, open risers, and we would not be permitted to build those today under the current code. And then you have an image of your typical classroom, which is about 20 by 29 is the overall, and that includes wall finishes. What we attempted to do in this chart is kind of give you a spread of what the options might be with Dodge. So in these first two columns here, we just said, if we don't do the addition and we just live with the classroom size, what would it cost if we did the absolute minimum renovation? And so we've got a number here that's around 7 million dollars. If we go in and we try to do some upgrades and make it look like something actually happened in the school, we're getting to a number that's more like 11 million dollars. Then we looked at it again, the same way, but providing the addition and increasing the classroom sizes. And then we're in the 16 million and 22 million dollar range. And we just set that alongside of what it would cost to replace the Dodge based on 869 students, because that sets the square footage, at about 24.8 million dollars. So when I talk about the two-thirds replacement cost, it seems like in these categories over here, you wouldn't give too much serious consideration to, because you're at two-thirds or over the cost. At Harvey Chamberlain, under high priorities, we've got roofing, in fact, we have roofing projects going on right now. We are working on fixing the water coming into the octagon by the cafeteria, that's also a summer program. Paving, we're paving the library lot this summer, and the school is undertaking some hot water replacements. Under medium, we've got masonry repair, the locker rooms need to be completely redone, gutted and refitted. Roofing and paving, now those seem to be a repeat, but that's because what we're going to take care of this summer is by no means going to take care of your ongoing problems. So it's going to be an ongoing thing that we need to continue to address. Under low priority, we've got auditorium seating, toilet rooms, and hall lockers, we've got the very narrow nine-inch hall lockers. A few images here, on the upper right, upper left, that's not an optical illusion, that wall is actually bowing out, there is a crack in the wall moving along here, and the wall is actually displaced an inch or two. Upper right, you can see the paint because of the sagging paint from the water that's coming through the octagon roof. The lower left is a roof that we're actually replacing right now, and in the lower right, that is not an accessible pathway, but that's being replaced with the library parking lot this summer. At the high school, under high priority, you've got ongoing problems with your low slope. Many people call them flat roofs, but there's actually some slope filled into them. Those roofs are all probably 17, 18 years old, but they are actually failing in a premature way. We normally, like I said, figure 25 years for a roof, but I believe that next year we are probably going to be attacking some of the roofs in, at the high school. The school district is taking care of some hot water issues, but you have, still have ongoing problems with the sound systems and fire alarm systems. Under medium priority, there will be ongoing programs in paving and sidewalk replacement. The cooling tower needs to be replaced in the next three to five years. And again, just as a repeat, we're going to be an ongoing program with your low slope roofing replacements. Under lower priorities, we've got classroom technology, again, paving and sidewalks, carpet, and your auditorium lighting and sound upgrades. A few images from the high school, you can see the moss growing on your low slope roof there in the upper right. Some of the masonry issues. This upper left is around your service yard, and what's happening is water is going through the open joints of those capstones and getting down into the wall, you can see the efflorescence. There are spalled bricks, the wall is cracked right through in a number of locations. In the lower left, you can see the gutter and downspout is something that we need to look at and address. This, they put a scupper box in these and the birds love them, and they're clogging up your downspouts. So we have plans this summer to get up there with a man lift, inspect the gutters, figure out if they need any help, but we'll probably get into modifying the situation with the downspouts. And some other things you can see here is because of what happens with the water back up here, you can see water staining, you can see efflorescence along the brick walls. So it does translate to masonry and wall problems. But our plan is to attack that in a relatively high priority. And the lower right is just a photograph, it's a matter of curiosity mostly, but what you can see here is the misalignment of the foundation wall with the exterior walls. And it's just, I think, indicative of the problems that the contractor was having when he built this building. At Tiger Stadium, under high priority, we've got the tennis court repair and replacement, which is ongoing right now. Another high priority is to address the new fieldhouse, team lockers and finishes and ventilation, and some of those issues also occur in the old fieldhouse. And then at some time, we need to deal with the home side storm drainage. And to explain that a little bit is the city has property above at higher elevation than you do, and water comes off of that property and it all funnels right down the east side of your, the Tiger roadway there. And it just funnels out onto the ground and there's no way for it to be accommodated. And so what's going to need to happen is we're going to have to develop an underground storm drainage system to address these issues, and then we can tie in and fix some of the drainage issues in front of the old fieldhouse. But these fixes are going to be difficult or impossible until there's an upgrade of the storm system on that side of the stadium. Under medium priority, some of the toilet rooms need to be fixed. Obviously in your new fieldhouse, you're okay there. I already discussed the east side storm drainage. On the home site on the left, we're addressing some minor issues over there, and we're incorporating that into the work we're doing this summer. And then under low priority, we've been discussing technology upgrades for the stadium. Some things that are, oops, I didn't want to do that. A couple of items here, and these are included because there's been discussion that you would like to see upgrades at your stadium. We've provided a range of costs to provide new stadium parking on the north end of the stadium, and also to create a new grand entrance for your stadium. And we've put costs between 400 and 600 for your parking and 100 to 250,000 for a new stadium gateway. hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand for a new stadium gateway. Just a few images related to the stadium. In that upper left, this photograph is from standing down by the softball field near Ravenna Road and looking up at the stadium. This just shows that there's an elevation change of about ten feet, which we're going to need to take into account if we get into a paving program over there. It probably involves some fill and dealing with grades that are manageable. The upper right shows a erosion problem under your home stadium. We're attempting to fix that this summer. And, the lower left shows a catch basin which is high and dry, and not doing its job, and it's also something that we're going to deal with this summer. And then, the other photograph, you're looking at the old fieldhouse, and again, this kind of relates to the east side stadium drainage. You have a large area here that's very irregular, and so, it needs to be repaved to drain water, and then we need to provide a place for that water to go, which we don't really have right The TAP building is in an old residential structure. It needs extensive work. Under high priorities, it needs HVAC, foundation repair, stairs and ramps, fire line work. It also needs doors and windows, roofing work. And lesser priority would be to provide some paving and sidewalks and some exterior lighting. Few images of the TAP building. Those walls, those retaining walls are actually bowing in, and it's just a matter of time before they collapse. In fact, you would have to time opening that door. On the right side, you see stairs without guards and rails, and the entrance ramp is too steep. It is not considered accessible. The bus maintenance garage, there's plenty wrong with that, and I guess the simple statement is, it's just beyond repair, and it needs to be replaced. You know, we can talk about the systems, but, and the cost, but it simply doesn't function for its need, and doesn't fit your needs. So, we would propose that this gets replaced, and probably at the bus parking complex. We would create a transportation center there. Few images. You can see the dilapidated siding, the rusty framing. The upper image is the storage shed, and the left, on the upper left, is the bus garage. All the metal siding and roofing needs to be replaced, among many other things. The storage building, now, this is at your bus parking area, is in, it's in fair condition. The problem is that as we look at programming and getting into the master plan, it's in the wrong place. And, so, we're going to need that for bus parking, and so, we're proposing that when we get into some future programs here, that your current bus garage would be replaced by a new maintenance and storage facility. And then, the last building is the board of education. It's been receiving some renovation work. Under high priorities, there is a roofing program in place. I believe that work might be done. Conference room cooling, adding a welcome center or a secure vest wheel, and hot water. And some other issues that related are site lighting, and just painting and repairing some exterior trim. So, this is just a summary sheet. All of the columns that you've seen on the left of all of these are just re-entered here, and so, you're all in cost. When we go through all of that, plus your non-construction costs and contingencies, brings us to about forty-six million dollars. Now, this does include, when we go up here and talk about Dodge, this does include this seven point nine million dollars for that addition. So, I think that's, so, I'll let Rob Puckel benefit.
Great. We know this is a lot of information for you to digest, and obviously, you can look through the notebooks, and we'll be glad to answer at any time, any of your questions. Looking at master plan options, we looked at a number of options, and as we met with the administration, and we kind of narrowed it down to really four options. And so, those are the ones we are going to present. Again, these are based on your two-twenty, two thousand twenty-one enrollment, and all the costs you see here, all the costs that we developed for your assessment are two-thousand sixteen dollars. And, those all include the soft costs. When we develop a cost for a new building, it's move-in condition. We have all the furniture there, everything that's ready to go, so a teacher could walk into their room and start teaching immediately. So, all the furniture, loose furnishings are part of this. The only thing we don't include are things like the laptops and computers and those type of things. In option one, we would look at rebuilding Dodge Intermediate School. It's got the issues with the classrooms, as Ken talked about. And in this option, you'd renovate Wilcox, and you'd renovate Bissell. And what we would do is propose building one new four-to-six intermediate school building for the eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine students that are at Dodge. And in this scheme, we would build it on the existing site, and I'll show you a drawing of that. Then, we would renovate Chamberlain, the high school, the athletic fields, replace the bus garage, as Ken described. We would relocate the TAP programs. There's a lot of room in your district that we could find. We believe we could find a place for that program in district-owned properties, so that's what we're proposing here. There'd be a little renovation to one of your existing facilities. And then, the stadium repairs, maintenance, the tennis courts that are happening now. So, in option one, it's about a fifty-three point seven million dollar cost. And if you look here, this is your existing site with Dodge School and the treatment plant here, and your athletic facilities. And what we did was lay out a building that would be the size for that eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine students. And you can see here that it would take up the back area of the property. What we look at doing is so you don't have to move the students into swing space, is try to figure out a way that you could keep the existing building in operation and still build a new building. And this is how you would have to do it here. And then, we just show another way to do your athletic fields. They could be developed just about any way you want. We also looked at, this is a single-story building, we also looked at what if you did a two-story building on the site? And what this would allow you to do is still be able to build the building while the existing one was in operation, but it would also allow you to save the baseball field here. So, that's another option, is to do a two-story building instead of a one-story building. And again, you can see the difference in the floor plan there. When we lay out these new buildings, it includes all of the parking that would be required. What we try to do is separate the bus and car traffic, so when we do these, the building is conceptual, but it's the actual square feet that you would need, but all the parking and all the circulation is, would be real. This is exactly, we figure out exactly what parking needs you would have, so this is a true look at really what you would need on the site. Option two would be to build a new two-grade middle school. Again, you'd renovate Wilcox and Bissell. What we would do here is propose renovating and converting Chamberlain to a four-six intermediate school, and build one new seven-to-eight building. The rest of the master plan is the same as the previous one, but we've highlighted the differences on each of the plans, and that's, costs a little less, is fifty-one million. And we would propose building it at the high school site. Here's the existing high school site. And what we did is we laid out a building, a new building here, of grade six to eight, and also grade seven to eight. This is actually the largest footprint that you would need for the larger building, and the one hundred and thirty-four thousand square foot building. The other one would be about ninety thousand square feet, but they would both fit, this being the largest. And then, what you could also have is shared parking. There's things that you can do educationally, where the kids could come across to the high school. There's a lot of pluses to building next to the high school here. You would have parking that you could use for events at the high school, as well as the middle school, and you could even add some additional parking here. Option three, build new three-grade middle school. And again, renovation of Wilcox and Bissell. What we do is convert RB Chamberlain to a four-five intermediate school, and then build a six-to-eight. So, you're taking one more grade and putting it in the new middle school at the high school site. And again, these are the same, and that's about close to sixty million. And again, this would be your plan, which would be the larger building. And then, the last option talks about your preschool program. What we would do here is, oops, sorry. What we do is renovate and convert Wilcox Primary School to a grade PKK building. There's enough room in that building to relocate your board offices there, too, so you could do something else with the board office property. And actually, when we looked at this building, there are a lot of larger classrooms. Typically, when we do kindergarten or pre-K classrooms, you want about twelve hundred square feet, eleven hundred to twelve hundred, and there are a lot of rooms, larger rooms in there. So, when we looked at putting this, the PKK in the building, it really works out really nicely for you. Also, we would propose renovating and converting Bissell then to a one-two building, and then converting and renovating RB Chamberlain to a three-five. So, you'd have the PKK, one-two, and three-five in those three buildings, and then you would build one new six-to-eight middle school at the high school site, which is the same footprint that we showed you before. So, those are the kind of four master plan options that we narrowed it down to in our discussions. And that really concludes our presentation for tonight. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, or later after you digest all this information. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the board and the district, and we'll answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you very much, first of all. You talk about digesting, what took you a year to put together may not be digested in one night. I will just make note to the community that, you know, this was a year in the making. This is just part of one goal, and we're just at the beginning stages. This is not a plan, per se, this is our options. We plan on, you know, very much thoroughly studying this, not just the finance that you heard earlier this evening, you know, but how this is going to impact the community, and this is not going to be done, you know, with the five of us or the eight of us, this is going to be done with the entire community. So, I'm going to see if my colleagues have any questions. I've been through this a couple of times already, thank you. And again, thanks for this. You know, there goes the July Fourth Weekend. But, questions, you know, for those that maybe have seen it the first time, or those seen it for the third time.
I just want to thank members of the board that were here before I was in administration for the foresight to, you know, bring these guys on board and have them do this extensive assessment of all the facilities. And just commend you on bringing all this information down into, you know, four distinct options that I think, you know, after seeing it three times, I think really gives us a quality project to kind of bring forth to the community, regardless of whatever option, you know, is, you know, moved forward, hopefully, you know, or whatever the community would support. They're all great options, and I think you guys have spent a significant amount of time putting this together. I appreciate it, and commend you guys, and Chad, I know this has been your project for a long time as well, so, you know, thanks for your effort in it. I'm happy with the results and just the in-depth work that was put forward to get to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. This is extremely comprehensive. This is a little more than light reading, but nonetheless, I do appreciate all the time and effort that you guys have put into putting this document together. And I really appreciate the forethought of looking at things from making sure that our kids are at facilities that allow them to be, you know, true twenty-first century learning technologically, from a capacity standpoint, and not only from students, making sure that we have facilities that are conducive, not only for learning, but for teaching and for working. As we know, we're moving pretty fast with respect to, just with respect to technology, with respect to, from an instructional standpoint. And so, we want to make sure that if we have new facilities, or renovations, or whatever, whatever the choice is, that we're right there, you know, and I like to be ahead of the curve as much as possible, but we want to make sure that our kids, you know, have as much of an opportunity to be successful, and we, as a board and as a community, provide them the tools to do that. So, I do think that we've got some options. It's definitely whittles down and distills down a lot of decision-making that we don't have to necessarily do now. We're able to kind of look at things more strategically, and also in line with what we're facing financially as well. I think this does give the community an excellent opportunity to kind of take a look at what our facilities look like. I really like the tiered approach as well, so looking at things, different costs and what come with those costs as well. So, I think that it provides some flexibility for making some decisions that are going to be beneficial for us, and also from a cost standpoint. So, I don't really have many questions, because I've got a lot more to dig into, but I do appreciate the work and the effort that's been put into this document.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
I appreciate, too, how you categorize everything, from high priority down to low priority, because some of the high priorities we knew are things that we need. They're not necessarily flashy or showy, and might not actually see what's going on, but it's necessary, and just to keep the buildings warm, safe, and dry. but it's, it's necessary and just to keep the buildings warm, safe and dry. But that is also, I mean, that's very helpful to me too, just to see it broken down by priority as well. So that's one thing I appreciate and the different cost options and factors and, and the options one through four gives us a lot to look at and consider, but thank you for putting this together. So, I mean, it, it's thick, it's, you know, very detailed, but it's easily readable. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I'm sorry, Rob.
Sure.
When you put these costs together, understanding that this isn't, this isn't anything that's going to happen overnight, so when you put the costs together, does it take into account inflation? Does it take into account the rise of materials, the cost of materials and things like that from a longitudinal standpoint?
It does somewhat. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but typically when we, like if we're using two thousand sixteen numbers, what we're thinking of is that, let's say for example, you had a bond issue in November two thousand sixteen, it would take you about a year to do all the documents, the, the design drawings, get it ready, and then, you know, in the following spring, you'd probably, you know, break ground and then it would take you at least eighteen months to build the building. So that's, that's kind of the range of costs that, so the two thousand sixteen numbers give you a couple of years sort of ahead of, of where you would be. After that, we just don't know. It's hard to predict, but, so we do have some forward thinking in it. It's not like you would be breaking ground today and those would be today's exact cost, but we're looking at, you know, a year down the road possibly when you would get started on a typical project.
And I just want to, you know, continue to point out, I know it was only an hour and a half ago, what we were talking about finance and we're talking about levy cycles. And, you know, we, we've had predecessors that had the foresight to do a permanent improvement forecast and, and five-year plan and, and Mr. Lenzel and Mr. Walker who took that over, you know, these are not things that are done in a vacuum. So when I mentioned in my president's report, we've got a lot of decisions to make, it's not going to happen that quickly, we've got a lot to consider and, and this is just one part of that. And again, it's not our schools, it's community schools in the district, so we're going to all have to pull together and, and really try to understand where we're coming with this and while it's, it's redundant to say we're in the business of education, you haven't heard the last of TPP and we'll continue with that lesson plan as well as, you know, all this lesson plan that you've given us. So thank you and if there's no further comments, I know you guys are, you know, should be commended as well because in addition to running the district and everything else that goes with running a district, you know, this plan was, was, was worked on extensively, so I think, you know, to Marty and Chad and Superintendent Powers as well.
Thank you. Mr. Felber on board, just, just to kind of outline some next steps then potentially for you to consider. I know that the Board of Education is interested in a work session in July and I believe the focus for that work session will be further conversation about this facility's plan, but also and probably, and I'll wager to guess more importantly, the facilities and how this plan and the levy cycle will work with each other. So that meeting has to take place and that conversation will probably be more than one night of conversations, but that has to be a priority before we get ahead of ourselves in saying we're going to do any project.
Thank you.
So that would be the next step is conversations with the Board of Education, sort of to focus where we would like to go. And then I would imagine, board, you're going to be directing me then to begin the work of community engagement, not only about the facilities, but also about potential ballot issues. So that will be an ongoing project that will take some time to do right, much like we did for the operational change plan and for the facilities focus groups that we held last year. So that would occur next. From that point, we'll be reporting back to the Board of Education all of the feedback that we have gathered from engaging members of our community and we invite all members of the community to have input to this conversation because it, it will affect everyone who is a member of our school community. So that would be the next step. And then finally, Board of Education, the fourth and most important step of that will be then for you to consider all of that input and then to provide to Marty and me direction of the scope of work that you would like us to implement with our staff. So I believe that's the next challenge here, the next four steps outlined now that you have had a chance to be introduced to the work that has been ongoing this school year.
Thank you. I think that, that sums it up pretty, pretty well. Any further comments?
I just, I just want to thank the, the entire team, the Board of Education, all of the supervisors and head custodians and principals that provided a lot of input and the person on my left here. So Superintendent Powers was extremely helpful and quite often when you're working on a document for six, seven months, after a while, it starts to bleed together. And her strategic foresight on some of the things too was extremely helpful and Mr. Aho's advice as well on some of these different things. So it truly was a, a team effort and really appreciated all the support of the community and, and everyone here, so.
Thank you. All right. Well, back to the business of the schools. We are at remonstrance and I don't believe, you have any blue cards, Marty? So we are going to move on to treasurer's reports and recommendations. This is section H and without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read these five together. Thank you, gentlemen. This would be a good time, unless you're welcome to, you're welcome to stand. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of June first, two thousand sixteen, as sent to the board under separate cover. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the final amended appropriations for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. This too was sent to the board under separate cover. H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the temporary appropriations for fiscal year two thousand seventeen at an amount not to exceed estimated revenues on the official certificate of estimated revenues for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Grant funds shall be appropriated in the amount equal to the remaining funds for the particular grant and for the amounts approved for the next grant year, as sent to the board under separate cover. H4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the amended certificate of estimated resources for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, as sent to the board under separate cover. H5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, in order to provide for the prompt and efficient execution of fiscal affairs for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, authorizes the treasurer to perform transfers and advances sufficient to cover the amount of the special revenue and grant funds per ORC thirty-three fifteen point two zero and that the encumbered, ah, excuse me, unencumbered balance in the school's district general fund is greater than the aggregate required amounts in the school district's special grant funds. Is there a motion for those five as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Soler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis and then I will turn to Mr. Aho for any special comments because this is a little more, these are some standard, regular things, but this is the time of the year.
Yeah, this is kind of the end of the whole budgetary process. The budgetary process starts in, in January last year, this all started January last year. We did the budget, budget hearing and that really kind of starts the ball rolling with the, with the Budget Commission in Summit County. You know, they give us feedback, let us know what their predictions on the real estate collections are. All this is kind of just, you know, getting estimates of where we're going on things and then the whole idea is so that you don't spend more than you have in revenues and, and fund balance. So basically at year end then, we take all those estimates and we really have the numbers pretty close to what they're at and we zero them out. So really the appropriations become what's expended plus any encumbrances. The certificate of estimated resources really becomes the revenues, the receipts that we receive. And so they're basically just zero everything out, send that to the county. This is all part of the budgetary process. When the auditors come in, they look at this, they want to make sure that we're on top of it, you know, that we're, we're watching our funds and then the last thing with the transfers is that's where we have to, in particular, right now, the, the federal grants, they'll only let you get like five dollars or five dollars, five days of funding in advance. So basically you're, you're always kind of asking them for money you've already spent. So what happens at a year end is those funds usually get negative couple of dollars here and there or whatever. If somebody, if, you know, if one of the funds, the Title I fund was buying some, making some purchases, they had the purchase orders open, you can't request the purchase order what's open, you have to only request what's being spent. So then we have to cover that funding with, in advance. When they get the money, then they pay it back. So all this ties together so that there's no negatives and, and so that, you know, there's, everything kind of zeros out at the end of the year.
Any other questions, colleagues? All right. Roll call please.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that item passes four zero. We are now on action items personnel. I, one, two, and three, I'll read without objection from my colleagues together. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I1 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I2 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I3 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Soler. We have to correct something on our agenda. You are now going to be corrected.
I didn't make a motion.
We're making it, yeah.
I didn't see my name, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're seeing, we're seeing some old names pop up from the past on our agenda, that's why we're laughing up here, but that'll be a typo soon, it'll be corrected. So we have motion by Mrs. Davis, second by Mr. Soler. Any discussion on those three as read? Doesn't take much to throw us off.
Mr. Felber, before you take a roll call, just so, so that you know that A, in August, as we do every year at our first opportunity, which would be August seventeenth, we will have the new staff members formally introduced to the board. You will notice on the agenda this evening, a number of new names that you haven't seen before. Mrs. McKinney has been very busy, she's in the back here. It's been a very, very busy last forty-eight hours as we were trying to secure commitments from teachers and these teachers are coming to us, the ones that we're recommending this evening, from different school districts and by statute, a teacher has till July tenth to resign from their position with their current Board of Education. So Mrs. McKinney worked really hard up to the last minute today, as you know, the board agenda was a little late today because we wanted to secure commitments to be able to commit them to the agenda this evening. And again, you will meet them all on August seventeenth.
Well, forward to it. Thank you for the reminder. Any further questions on those three? Roll call please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes four zero. We're now on action items and J, without objection from my colleagues, I will read all fifteen. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a one thousand seventy-nine dollar donation from Hynans of Warrensville Heights, Ohio, teaming up for education program for the Twinsburg High School Renaissance, Renaissance account per the attached exhibit J1. J2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a fourteen dollar donation from the Bob Evans Farms of New Albany, Ohio, through the Twinsburg High School Drona Club per the attached exhibit J2. J3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts donation from Target of Minneapolis, Minnesota in amounts of five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents and nine hundred dollars even for the supplemental education supplies at Wilcox Primary and a hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for supplemental educational supplies at Twinsburg High School per the attached exhibit J3. J4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised job descriptions for data specialist, assistant to the director of pupil services, administrative assistant to the business manager, pupil services department secretary, and a new job description for software support specialist per the attached exhibit J4. J5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised central office salary schedule effective July one, two thousand sixteen per the attached exhibit J5. J6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Contemporary Issues Class to travel to Cincinnati, Ohio on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, and to visit the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center and related sites. The trip will be paid for students as sent to the board under separate cover. J7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School football team to travel to John Carroll University from July seventh through July ninth, two thousand sixteen, to attend summer football camp. This trip will be paid for by the Twinsburg Athletic Booster Football Accounts as sent to the board under separate cover. J8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a facilities use agreement with John Carroll University for the Twinsburg High School football camp, again to be held July seventh through ninth, two thousand sixteen. J9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Boys Soccer Team to travel to the Hilton Garden in Twinsburg on July twenty-sixth through twenty, July twenty-eighth for soccer camp. This trip will be paid for by funds raised through AC Soccer Youth Summer Soccer Camp as sent to the board under separate cover. J10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement between the Twinsburg Board of Education and Cendero Therapies for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. This agreement will provide occupational therapy in accordance with the Individuals with Disabilities Improvement Act and its implementing regulations in the State of Ohio's Education of Children with Disabilities Act. And this was sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. J11, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with Solutions Behavioral Consulting to provide ESY services for summer two thousand sixteen at a cost of eighteen hundred and two dollars for two students. Additional hours will be billed at a hundred and fifty dollars per hour for consultation and forty-five dollars per hour for tutoring, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a V1B fund expense. J12, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a student agreement access with Re-Education Services, Inc. for two students with disabilities for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. Both students will be attending the re-ed access program at two hundred sixty dollars per day, not to exceed a hundred and eighty-two days. Forty-seven thousand three hundred twenty dollars per student totaling ninety-four thousand six hundred and forty thousand dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover and this is a general fund expense. J13, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with the Cuyahoga County Educational Service Center, positive education program for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year for one student at the daily rate of two hundred thirty-one dollars for a hundred and eighty-five days. Tuition paid by the general fund, however, the tuition will be built back on the SF fourteen H and SF six, as sent to the board under separate cover. J14, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an educational service center of Cuyahoga County District Service Area Contract for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is also a general fund expense. Finally, J15, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below list of books to be deleted from inventory, and such list is on the agenda. J16, I guess it wasn't finally, there's another page. And resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below listing of items to be deleted from inventory and then again, the list is on J16. J17, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following equipment to be deleted from inventory, listed there. J18, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a school mini grant from the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of Summit County in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to be used at the Twinsburg High School for alcohol and drug prevention and education activities during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen academic school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. And now finally, J19, agreement to accept the grant from the Summit County ADM Board for RB Chamberlain Middle School, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a school mini grant from the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of Summit County in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to be used at the RB Chamberlain Middle School for alcohol and drug prevention and education activities during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen academic school year, as sent to the board for alcohol and drug prevention and education activities during the 2016-2017 academic school year, as sent to the Board under separate cover. May I have a motion for those 19 items as read?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. And I know there's going to be some comments on a couple of things. First of all, thank you as always for the donations. We have some things that, Mrs. Powers, you may want to address in J4 and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Yes. So, at the Board of Education office, we have the retirement of two important members of our staff, our EMIS coordinator as well as Mr. Walker's secretary, Mrs. Gracia. Tomorrow is her last day with us. And so, when those kinds of opportunities occur, what we like to do as an organization is to reflect upon the organization, how it operates, and make some adjustments to maybe refresh how we work as an organization and our efficiencies and productivity and such. And so, with those two retirements, we did take a look at how we operate internally. And what we noticed was some of our, some of the way that we manage our business was redundant in some places. And so, because of that, we want to be a more efficient operation. We think that we can do that by changing some job responsibilities, tweaking some of our systems, and then introducing a new job description this evening to fill a gap because of some of the moves that we're going to be making here at the Board Office. So, the former position of Business and Technology Coordinator that was previously held by Carol Freehoff will be dissolved because those responsibilities are actually going to be sent in different directions. And in that, dissolving that position, that allows us then to bring on board the software support specialist. And I can tell a true story that happened today. As the Board knows and members of our staff, over the summer, we're changing from an Outlook email to Gmail. And it took me several attempts this afternoon to get the board agenda to the Board because we were having some snafus with the system. So, this person will be supporting technology, but more importantly, supporting curriculum and do some professional development. And we'll work under the umbrella of Mrs. Farthing in our curriculum department. So, that is with that. And so, with those new job descriptions being approved, we had to then update our salary schedule so that those new positions are in there. And then, the 1.5% increase is not a new recommendation. The Board of Education actually approved that for the central office support staff back. I want to say, Marty, wasn't it like last fall in November? So, we're just committing that to the document, just so that everything's in one place along with those new job titles.
All right. Any further comments on anything else? Again, some trips, some good luck to the teams as they prepare for their upcoming seasons. And any further comments?
One important thing, Superintendent left out with the reorganization of this, as we talk about the new sharing responsibility. While we're creating some different job positions and titles and things like that, we're still doing it under the umbrella of the expenses for employee payroll and benefits that we incurred in the previous year as well. So, and just so the community is clear, these are new jobs created. There's some moving around and some restructuring, still staying with, you know, what we've spent in the previous pack. So, I appreciate the efforts again to reduce, you know, increase efficiencies and kind of shuffle things out so that we can, we can still provide the fantastic services that we are while still trying to keep our belts tight on the budget. So, thank you.
Good point. No additional costs?
That is correct.
In fact, maybe a hair or less, but that's always good. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those items pass for zero. We are now at miscellaneous. Is there any, anything else for the good of the order, so to speak? Sure.
Monday is 4th of July. There'll be an event on the square put on by Mr. Steve Murphy, who's put it on for quite a few years now, do the reading of the Declaration of Independence. It will start at 2:00. I'm honored, actually, he asked me to be part of the reading this year. So, I will join State Representative Christina Rovner, Municipal Court Judge Caterina Cook, Summit County Council Member Gloria Rogers, Summit County ESC Board Member Bill Romer, Twinsburg Township Trustee Jim Baylog, and State Senator Frank LaRose. We'll all be reading parts of the Declaration of Independence. The VFW, local VFW post, will also be in attendance there. So, I encourage everybody to come out if you're in town. It's at 2:00. It's a great event. I've attended it for the past few years. And I think, I think it's something that is very, very important and just kind of get a history of why we're actually celebrating on the 4th of July. So, again, I encourage anybody who's in town to attend. Thank you.
Anything further? All right. The Board does have need for executive session. The Board of Education will enter into executive session at 7:58. For the update regarding the bargain sessions with the Twinsburg Support Staff Association concerning their compensation and/or other terms of employment as per the Board of Education policy 0166E, I will make that motion. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes for zero. We do not anticipate further business when we reconvene. So, we wish you a good night and enjoy a little bit of the rest of the summer evening. Thank you.